Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran and I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask that you join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask the clerk to call the rule.
Rosa Torres.
Present.
Mitchell Moffett, excused. Paul Mendez.
Present.
Cam Laramine.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Dana Crutchfield, excused. Rachel Teal, excused. Jay Handler?
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are six members present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to the City Council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Spectrum Charter Cable, PSC Channel 191, and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also being recorded, so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. You click on the video on-demand link and you make your selection of the meeting you want to watch there. There are also copies of the meeting agenda back on the back table that you may follow along, and there is also a sign sheet as well on the back table. At this time, I'd also like to ask you to silence your cell phones, mobile devices, to prevent any interruptions during the meeting. For those present... Do you want to do the interpreter now?
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to make sure the commission and the audience was aware that we do have translation services available this evening for the public hearing.
Yeah, do you want me to do that now? I was going to do that during the public workshop, but we can do it now.
Yeah, I would recommend doing the announcement right now.
I'd like to ask our interpreter to come up then to the podium, right? And then you can just... Actually, as I continue, I'll pause for you to... Oh, we got the headsets. Okay. Perfect. Then we don't need the podium. For those present this evening, when you're given the opportunity to address the commission, please come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, and state your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings like this one being held this evening not only to be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits the Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. Any objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? And we have no online, right? No online commissioners? I hear, let the record show, there are no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening that would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on this agenda? I see none, so let the record show there were no declarations. We, as a Planning Commission, need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to City Council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the official record the City Council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. So moving forward with tonight's agenda, we have no approval of meeting minutes because this is a special meeting. We have no old business, and we will move right into the public hearing item, which is the Community Development Block Grant Amendments to the Annual Action Plan for Program Years 2021 to 2024. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Webb, or, sorry?
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to express the appreciation for this being available for a special meeting this evening. This is an item that's been discussed at the previous Planning Commission meetings. It's also been an item that's been in front of the Pasco City Council for the past several, two months or so as well. So I just wanted to do a brief introduction to this item before I pass it on to Ms. Webb, who will present the staff report. Also wanted to make it known that Deputy City Manager Richard Sigdel is also available as well for us this evening. So, thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. To start this evening, I wanted to provide you with some background, which brought us to this public hearing tonight. The Lewis Street overpass construction, which began in August 2021, included a necessary temporary closure of West Lewis Street from North Oregon Avenue to North Second Avenue starting February 26th of 2024. This closure, expected to last about eight weeks, has led us to traffic, reroutes, and potential delays aiming to enhance city connectivity and safety. The closure has impacted local businesses along Lewis Street, promoting them to seek assistance from the City Council due to operational disruptions. The City of Pasco is committed to supporting these businesses in the form of providing weekly updates. Next slide, please. This is a photo of the groundbreaking that took place back in June of 2021, as well as the completed bridge in April of 2024. Next slide. And these are just some more pictures of the bridge from different angles. Next slide. Tonight, we will discuss a substantial amendment to the Annual Action Plans for Program Years 2021 through 2024. As you can see from the slide, City Council plans to reallocate $370,000 from the Lewis Street Second to Fifth Project to the 2024 Small Business Relief Program to aid effective businesses. In order for this to happen, per the Citizen Participation Plan, we had to undergo a 30-day public comment period that started on March 28th, 2024, along with having two public hearings to gather more feedback on this initiative. Next slide, please. You all were provided a copy of the application along with the guidelines. This slide shows some of the criteria that the businesses must meet to be eligible to apply and receive funding. Applications were open two weeks ago, but funding cannot be dispersed until City Council holds the second public hearing, which is scheduled for tomorrow, May 1st, at 2:00 PM in the City Council chambers. As of today, we have only received three applications, with two of them missing documentation and one is not in the council-approved geographical area. Next slide, please. This is the Lewis Street Overpass Council. This is the Lewis Street Overpass impacted area that Council approved. And with that, that includes the presentation, and me or Deputy City Manager can answer any questions that you all may have.
Excellent. Thank you for that presentation. So, a couple of clarifications that probably all of us have. So you're saying that you received three applications?
So far.
And of the three applications so far, none of them have qualified? Is that what I heard?
Well, the two that are missing some documentation, if they bring that in, then we will take a look again.
But the one is outside the eligibility board.
Outside of the geographical area that was approved by Council.
And this is, the 370, as I understood, is not just for one year. It's like accumulation of four program years, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Questions from the commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Larry.
So Ms. Webb, our last meeting, I believe you shared out there was going to be some upcoming workshops. Can you tell us a little bit about if those were held, and if so, when, and what kind of their attendance looked like, and if there was translation services at those workshops?
So, yeah, so those were the weekly updates that we were giving to the businesses. So myself, Deputy City Manager, the interim Public Director, and the contractor working on the project would go and give updates either on the project. When we got the application ready, we went and handed them out, and yes, there was people there to interpret for them. And the applications were provided in both English and Spanish as well.
Wonderful. So it sounds like it was a pretty robust outreach to the community, as well as some one-on-one kind of tutoring through the application process versus a large group setting?
Yes. We have been partnering with Washington State Small Business Development Center, so trying to leverage the partners that already exist in the community where the businesses, we can connect the businesses with the resources that a dedicated organization might have, that the city might not be able to efficiently replicate. So we have partnered with them, brought them into the meetings. We're holding weekly meetings since February with the business orders, and like Ms. Webb mentioned, the topics, it can be anything relating to questions regarding traffic, signage, construction schedule, what to expect for the future, as well as what is in front of you today, which is assistance from the city.
One more follow-up question. How many businesses were roughly identified that may fall into this need?
I believe it is, Kristin just told me it's 39. I was thinking it was more like 27, but 39 businesses.
Excellent. I want to also clarify, and I'll ask staff and Deputy City Manager to keep me honest. Our job here tonight is not to go through individual of the applicants. It's to hear from the applicants in a public hearing, and it is either to approve the closure or the not closure of the public hearing, and secondarily, whether we recommend or deny the reallocation of the funds. We are not getting into the applicants and the allocations or criteria. Our job is to simply recommend whether these funds from four program years should be reallocated for this purpose. So just want to make sure everybody's clear. Did I get that right, staff?
That is correct. Thank you.
To keep me honest, and because I also want to make, I want to make sure we understand our job, that it's not to dive into whether an applicant is qualified or not, or meets criteria, how much they get. Our job is to decide whether we've heard enough to agree to recommend the reallocation of funds to Council tomorrow. Good. Any other questions, Commissioners? Go ahead.
Commissioner Campos, just had a clarification. You said there was 39 identified businesses. How many businesses are there in total in that area?
That is a count that we've not made. You could, 39 businesses in that map area that you see the blue rectangle, but is your question relating to all of downtown?
Yeah, I was just wondering if the 39 identified businesses were just based off the criteria, or if there was, let's say, 50 businesses, and only 39 met the criteria? I just want a clarification on that.
No, 39 businesses are the businesses that exist within, and they might qualify or not based on many other factors, but they do qualify based on geography.
Okay, thank you so much. And then all 39 businesses have been confirmed as far as reached out, and they know of this, or... Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners, for staff? If not, and we will have opportunity for questions at the close of public hearing as well, but I think what I would like to do now is open it up for public hearing on this item. For those that want to speak, please come forward to the podium. If you require the interpretation service, we will provide that as well. State your name and address, or city of address for our records, and I welcome you to speak now. Are there any that would like to speak in the audience? Great, welcome. Would you like interpretation, or you're good? Okay, thank you.
Is it on now? Okay. So my name's Valerie. I'm coming with 220 West Lewis Street. It's called Lewis Street Tire, which is right in the left-hand corner. As I understood, we're not here to talk about the application process or anything like that, just basically approving funds to be moved over. Though us, Lewis Tire, does not qualify, even though we are geographically on there, I do think it's important that these doors are open for everyone who does qualify. I understand that, for example, we don't qualify, unfortunately, for something like this. I do think it's important for the better good of the whole community to be able to apply for these benefits. We have been greatly impacted with the construction. They did show the pictures of the beautiful bridge, and if you guys had a chance to do a little bit of research, we had no sidewalks, no driveway. It was a ghost town. There was absolutely nobody. Thank God, today. We see some cars now. So traffic has picked up a little bit. Impacts are still going to be there for a while, unfortunately, but I do think it's important that these funds are moved over to help better that whole economy, because it might look small, but there is 39 of us in that area. Just in the area that I was specifically coming for, which is that corner, from first to second, there was about 20 of us in that little block. Doesn't look like a lot, but there is. I know that this might not be the moment, but I do want to just reiterate that it would be beneficial to most of us if the application was revised into something that was a little bit that... Something that we could all benefit from, because it's unfortunate to see that the funds could be moved over, but that we can't even use them. So if there's anything that could be done in that process, I know that a lot of us would greatly appreciate it, because most of the people in this audience are people who don't qualify. Yeah, I think that's it.
Can you share, and appreciate you being here and sharing. Can you share, if you can, no specifics unless you want to, but can you share, like materially, from your annual revenue? Do you estimate that maybe it's had, what percentage do you think impact on your annual revenue as a business? Do you think this has impacted? You don't have to give us dollars, but...
No. For example, us, we run a tire shop, so you have to have access to drive into us. There was no access for a great deal of time. I didn't have a driveway, so that meant that I had to close for six weeks because of the fact, there was a driveway at one point towards the very end, but there was no cars coming in. So for an example, for the month of April, there was zero. That's just one month, and April's our best month, because income tax season comes. So a lot of people who have extra money now will put it into tires and wheels. So for example, month of April leaves me nothing. I just reopened. So, and that's just this month. That doesn't include halfway through March that we closed. So it was really bad. And that's not just for me. That's, there's for everybody there, because we all kind of do a little bit of everything on that plaza. So if you were coming to get tires, they were coming to get a taco, right? They'd go get a paleta or something like that, and it affected all of us to that extreme where we had to close because there was pedestrian access, but I couldn't put tires on pedestrians. Yeah?
Well, thank you for that. Please, also, I'd encourage you, we don't have control of the application criteria, but I would encourage you to express your views at City Council tomorrow, because that's another opportunity for you to express that, and then I'll open it up for any other questions for you from the Commissioners.
Yeah. Yeah, the, just to give you an example on that application, there are some things that are very, it's a little harder than other things have been, especially when some of these businesses are owned by one person, because it's a small business. So when those income limits come in, it's only one person reporting this amount of money, but even if they made not the standard median, they still showed a loss if we were to compare it to last quarter or the last year's first three months or anything like that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I think one of the things that is, you know, these are federal funds, so we have to be very strict within the federal guidelines, and I think that's one of the things that gets us in the criteria. But we appreciate you being here, sharing your point of view and the impact it's had on your business. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Welcome, sir. Please state your name and city of address or your business name.
Good afternoon. My name's Pedro, from here in Pasco. My business is right here in Lewis Street as well, 212. I'm two doors down from my neighbor over here. I'm just here to also support that we get some help there. I know that we're not making decisions as far as like who's getting what or what amounts today, but I just want to heed that you support the decision or the motion that was made by previous council that was here to allocate these funds to support the businesses. And I know that, like you said, many of the businesses aren't going to be able to actually apply. I might even fall short of being able to apply for it, but still those that might be able to get access to that, I would really support. Specifically for me, I already see that I'm at about 25%, 30% lower, and that's not including potential growth. That's just straight, you know, after, after a year. So I can give you that kind of detailed information about me, and I know that these other businesses actually have probably been impacted even more than myself. So if I was feeling that, I mean, you already heard from her, they shut down their doors for a whole month, and many of these other businesses did the same thing or had to do the same thing, and many of them were just getting started, you know? I don't know how many of them knew that this was going to happen or not, that got into buildings and just got their business started up, but it really is taking an impact on them personally, family, and all of them. So I just wanted to be one of the voices that comes up to support and ask for the help with the rest of the community that's here. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing the impact on your business and neighbors. Anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Go ahead. Okay, we got two. You're next. Welcome, sir. Please state your name and city of address or business.
Jose Cuevas, 132 West Lewis. I'm right in the corner of First and Lewis, right where the underpass begins. I own the Salon Fiesta in the corner and the automotive shop right adjacent to that same building. I'm more in the lines of my partner here in business, Valerie, how she spoke about, you know, maybe not being able to qualify because of the guidelines of the state or whatever. But I am here in support of the other businesses that can, and they do have had an impact. In my personal business, my salon, it's an event center, so my best months is this past month, April and May. Usually, all the way until July, August, those are the good months of having events and stuff like that. That's when my business is flourishes and then goes back to sleep again through the winter, fall and winter. The automotive shop has some, had about half impact, but I still can get my people in there. They're just confused how to get around, how to get there, but I guess the worst for me is coming now, because they are going to close completely the street so they can work on the overfilling that old underpass and doing whatever has to be done there. Or, and I, according to what I heard, it was, it's going to be about a month time, so... Anyway, that's what I have to say, and there is a certain impact in all the businesses there and all my neighbors, because like she's, Valerie mentioned, people come in, get their car fixed, their oil changed, they run to the taco truck, they go to the popsicle place, you know, it's just, no, no, they go hand in hand. Coffee shops, bakery, all that stuff. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you for sharing. Anyone else? Here we go.
Leo Peralos, 3902 Charleston Lane. I'm also a Pasco City Councilman. I just wanted to also lend my support to this endeavor. I want to thank you guys for being committed and coming on, you know, a very special meeting, and I mean, these businesses are just hurting, and it's even more heartbreaking seeing the fact that majority of them aren't going to be able to even access the funds, but yet they're still here because they support their brothers and sisters, their neighbors, and their businesses. You know, it's not a very good look for the city, and I know it's probably not in my best interest, right, as a council member, to come and pile on the city, because I also represent, because I represent the city, but sometimes the city does get things wrong, and it's okay to say that, as long as we learn from it and we make things better. I mean, these businesses were severely impacted. They had no access to their businesses, and when I saw that, I went down there and, I mean, streets were ripped up, sidewalks ripped up. I mean, no businesses were able to even get people there. I mean, if you need your car worked on, can't even get in there. The alleyway is, I mean, these alleyways are really bad, and that's another issue we can talk about. They did fix a little bit during this time, but no, I mean, I thought this was going to least assist these businesses, but if you look at the requirements, I mean, these businesses essentially had to be failing before this even really happened. If you really look at the requirements, I mean, I'll just, for instance, you know, let's, you know, again, it has to be five or less employees. Say if you live in a household, you're the business owner, and maybe there's some nuances to this, but let's just say you live in a household, three people, I mean, in order to qualify, you have to make less than $6,000. I mean, are you kidding me? I don't think, I don't know of any business owner that's just, that just wants to work through a whole year and just only make $6,000. I mean, you want to make more than that. I mean, some of these businesses do that in a month, so right off the bat, they don't qualify. And, and a lot of things too. I mean, I mean, there's a lot of other requirements. These businesses don't do a lot of work with the federal government, so a lot of those other identifiers. So I think there's a way, you know, obviously, like you said, Chairman, you know, direct the City Council, you know, I don't take no for an answer. I think there's a way that we can provide these funds, whether it's talk with the state, CBG funding from HUD, whatever it is, you know, you know, but at the end of the day, we would really appreciate it if you do secure these funds and reallocate them. And let's just say, you know, we don't use a lot of the funds. Well, then we can have another special meeting. We can reallocate these funds for other stuff in the community, but I think we need to sometimes legislate by priority, and to me, this is a priority. I know it's a priority to the council, and I also know it's a priority to the staff right now, and I really applaud the staff. They, they've really helped during this process, but you know, it's just, well, just another hurdle we just have to get over in the revitalization of downtown. So again, I appreciate your time, and I really hope you guys, you know, reallocate these funds for these businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peralos. Yeah, and I think we're a little bit bound by the criteria that comes with the source of these funds, and so there may be, council can take other opportunities to look for other sources, but this has some limits, and we're just where we're at. So, anyone else would like to speak to this item tonight? Go ahead.
Good evening. Dave Cortinas, President and Executive Director of the Latin Business Association here in Tri-Cities in 411 West Clark Street. We've been with these business owners since City Pasco shut down Lewis Street. They've been closed down now for more than over two months. As you already heard, a lot of them are hurting. The city approved, in three weeks, they approved the $370,000. These people can't use that money. They're federal funds, a lot of strings and ties, red tape, that these people don't qualify for that kind of money. I think the city should have known that, that these businesses are small businesses, mostly 100% Hispanic-owned, and they're hurting. So the Planning Commission can make some kind of recommendation to the staff. Now, they've done a very good job in meeting every week, 2:00 in the afternoon, every Thursday for the last two months. They've been very patient. They've been very nice, and they've gotten along with everybody. They have been professionals, and we've been meeting with them every week on seeing how we can help them. The Latin Business Association approved some emergency funds to help them pay their past due bills, and we've been helping them with that so that the lights don't get turned off, and the water doesn't get turned off, and the garbage gets picked up. And we still have businesses that are closed. So it would be appreciated that you folks talk to staff, send a recommendation to them. You've heard the complaints. You've heard what these, these businesses are going through. Now, we've asked the businesses to go ahead and apply and see if they can get some funds. You know, they're being promised that maybe a third party, another organization, or somebody can help them out, but those other businesses and other organizations were not in fault. They were not in fault. They didn't come here to close They were not in fault. They didn't come here to close down the streets. It was the City of Pasco who shut the streets down. It was the City of Pasco who had no way they, these, uh, these, some of these business owners had to let their employees go. They had to shut down. Now they're having a tough time getting their employees back. Um, I mean, it's just a chain of reaction of problems for these businesses and we're not, they're not gonna get any help. I, I hope they can, I hope they can get something, but it doesn't look like they're gonna be able to get anything. And the city's liable for this. The city's liable to be able to come up with some ideas and some funds to help these people. They're the ones that caused the problem. They need to find a way of doing it. And I hope that the city council and the staff can put their heads together with the recommendation from the planning commission to come up with some funds for these folks. Because they're, they're at the end of the rope. Some of these businesses are gonna close forever. Then we're gonna have to find somebody to fill those, for those, uh, those businesses. So appreciate you very much for listening to me and listening to these good people. They are, they're, they're fine people. They're just hurting right now, and they don't know where to turn, where to go. And, um, we just hope that, uh, Chairman Cochran and the rest of you can make some kind of good recommendation to the City of Pasco. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that and thanks for being here. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in this public hearing on this item?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Rebecca Ortiz y soy de la ciudad de Pasco.
Good afternoon, number of, uh, Ortiz, and I'm from Pasco.
Y represento, o soy dueña parte de UPS Auto Glass.
And I'm the owner of UPS Auto Glass.
El día de hoy estoy aquí porque ustedes me dan la oportunidad y muchas gracias.
I'm here today because you have, you guys have given me the opportunity and I'm very grateful.
También quiero decirles que la razón de que la señorita no tenga más aplicaciones es que ninguno de nosotros aplica para esas cosas tan estrictas.
And the reason, um, there's no more applications here with, um, with her is because most of us don't qualify, um, under these really strict, um, requirements.
Se dijo que esas reglas no se iban a cambiar por ningún motivo.
It was said that those rules were not gonna change for any reason.
Um, me siento muy triste porque tengo trece años con mi negocio.
Been really sad because I've had my business for thirteen years.
Este negocio lo empezamos con mucho trabajo, sin ningún centavo. Y no sé si alguno de ustedes tiene, ha tenido un negocio o lo tiene, y quisiera que me respondieran si sí o no.
And I started this business with, um, zero cents. And I'm wondering if any of you are business owners, I'd want, I'd like to know.
Nadie?
No one.
Okay. En mi negocio tuve que trabajar en el campo por las mañanas, en la tarde con mi esposo tratando de sacar el negocio día a día.
In the mornings I did, um, work out in the fields, and in the afternoons I helped my husband to keep the business afloat.
Aún así, tuvimos dos años en los que a veces no teníamos para comer y no nos rendimos.
And even with that, there was like two years where we didn't have enough to eat well, but we didn't give up.
El día de hoy, más bien todo este tiempo que el puerto ha estado así, um, he pensado que alguno de todos los que nos han, nos hubieran escuchado les hubiéramos dado por lo menos lástima.
All this time that the bridge has been closed and we've been doing this, I wish that at least someone took pity.
Porque nosotros batallamos duro al igual que nuestros hijos, para poder tener lo que teníamos.
Cause we have struggled along with our kids to have what we have.
El año pasado yo estaba segura que mi negocio iba incre- incrementarse más.
Last year I was sure my business was gonna grow.
Que no me iba a tener que preocupar.
And that I didn't have to worry.
Nosotros tengo dos personas que se certificaron para hacer recalibraciones.
I had two employees or, uh, two people that got certified.
Al día de hoy, mi negocio sigue estancado.
And today my business is stuck.
Por un punto, yo pensé que iba a pasar lo mismo que hace trece años cuando inicié mi negocio. Que iba a estar llorando y buscando dónde darle de comer a mis hijos.
At some point I thought I was gonna be back where I was thirteen years ago, struggling, trying to find some, um, food to feed my kids.
Tal vez piensen que soy una mentirosa, pero no lo soy.
You guys probably think I'm a liar, but I'm not.
Quiero que se den cuenta que simplemente por el hecho de ser mujer es más difícil para mí.
And I want you guys to be aware that just by the single fact that I'm a woman, it's harder for me.
Y he tenido que luchar duro y este traspié que nos pusieron.
And I've had to fight hard and this barrier that you guys put.
Es una puñalada, no nada más, para nosotros como hispanos, porque toda esa parte es de hispanos.
It's a jab not just to, um, me, but to, um, all of us because that whole area is Hispanic.
Yo sé que si fuera cual, cualquier americano sería igual el dolor, porque creo que los que tratamos de sobrevivir con un negocio es para poder tener una forma de vida mejor para nuestros hijos, nuestros padres, para nuestra familia.
And I think that it would be the same if, uh, if, uh, everyone was American, because we all want the same things. We want to provide, um, better for our families.
En mi caso, en mi negocio tenemos jóvenes que estudian, tres de ellos estudian. Uno de ellos ayuda a su abuelo que tiene cáncer, y yo no podía dejarlo ni a los que estudian, ni al que mantiene a su abuelo con cáncer.
And in my case, we had three employees that were students and one that was taking care of his grandpa with cancer and I just couldn't let him go.
Esa es la razón porque yo no aplico.
That's why my business doesn't qualify.
Tal vez a ustedes no les importe, pero a mí sí.
Maybe you guys don't care, but it matters to me.
Prefiero tener a unos muchachos trabajando que en la calle drogándose o robando.
I'd rather have some young guys working than out in the streets doing drugs or stealing.
Desafortunadamente, nadie se da cuenta de que el puente es muy hermoso, claro que lo es. Tuve la oportunidad por primera vez de pasar por ahí.
And the bridge is beautiful. I had the opportunity to go through it.
Pero eso no quita el daño que nos hizo. No quita.
But that doesn't fix the damage that you guys have done.
Lo que perdimos.
What we lost.
Y lo que tenemos que volver a iniciar otra vez.
And we have to go back to start over with.
Alguien de ustedes se puso a pensar que ahora tengo que in- iniciar mi negocio otra vez.
Did anybody ever think that I have to start my business from scratch?
Si ustedes fueran, estuvieran en mi posición, estarían felices.
If you guys were in my shoes, would you guys be happy?
Sí o no?
Yes or no?
No, ¿verdad? Creo que lo único que yo quiero es que ustedes pongan atención en que en realidad fuimos dañados. En realidad, sí, fueron a los meetings, pero nada nos ayudó.
I just want you guys to be aware of the damage that you guys have done. We, you guys did help the meetings, but that didn't help us any.
Todo lo que nosotros pasamos, lo que vamos a pasar, puede que nada más quede en palabras aquí con ustedes.
And everything that we've been through and that we're gonna go through, it's probably just gonna remain words here.
Se van a olvidar.
And you guys are gonna forget.
Para dentro de un mes esto va a ser pasado para ustedes.
This is just gonna be in the past in, in a month for you guys.
Para mí no.
But not for me.
Tengo que volver a empezar mi negocio otra vez.
I'm starting my business all over again.
A donde yo he dado todo, todo.
Where I gave my everything.
He hecho todo.
And I've done everything for it.
He cumplido las reglas.
And I've been following the rules.
Creo que ahora les toca a ustedes cumplir las reglas con nosotros.
I think you guys should follow the rules.
O creen que nosotros nos merecemos esto?
Do you guys do think we deserve this?
Si fuera yo alguien de su familia, creen que lo merecía.
Think I deserve this if I was a member of your family?
Lo merecía. Solamente quiero que pongan atención en eso, y ya que yo no voy a ser aprobada, por eso mi aplicación no está con la señorita.
I just want you guys to be aware, um, since my application
Creo.
Denied, it's with.
Creo que esa aplicación fue para desafortunadamente, para tratar de no llegar al propósito.
I feel like that, um, application was just in the way to not get to our goal.
No sé si fue así, personalmente, así lo siento.
How it was, but that's how it feels to me.
Tal vez sea por la, porque el daño fue para mí, ¿verdad? Porque fue la, porque la falta, um, la pérdida es mía.
Because the one hurting is me and the loss is mine, right?
Ahora, pero si a otras personas esto les puede ayudar o si ustedes pueden hacer una manera de que eso pueda llegar a las bolsillos de otras personas, créanme, que lo necesitan.
But if you guys are still able to, um, make the money go to the people that need it, believe me, they need it.
Sé que mi negocio va a tener que trabajar duro. Porque como hace la vez pasada, yo hablé aquí también y dije, nunca tuve la por- la for- la fortuna de que alguien del gobierno me diera un centavo para mantener a mis hijos. Para nada, he trabajado muy duro, así como con mi negocio, por eso me atrevo a decirles esto.
And I've been, um, and I'm ready to work hard, and like I've said last time I came up here to speak, I've never received a cent from the government. That's why I, um, I believe that I can stand here and tell you this.
Mis hijos están decepcionados.
My kids are disappointed.
Pero ellos saben que la vida es así. Cuando alguien te pone un pie, tienes, y te caes, tienes que levantarte.
They know that this is what, how life is. If somebody trips you, you get back up.
Solo quisiera que los errores que cometieron no los vuelvan a cometer.
I just hope that you guys don't make the same mistakes, the same mistakes again.
Porque todo el dolor que cada uno de los que están aquí y los que no vinieron lo tienen por su negocio, sus hijos lo saben, porque saben. Ellos se quedaron sin sus padres mientras que su negocio está, en mi per- en mi persona, mis hijos no tuve, no tenían a su madre desde las cinco de la mañana hasta las nueve de la noche. Porque su negocio tenía que ser fuerte un día para que ellos pudieran trabajarlo.
And believe me, everyone here is hurting, and their kids know it too. Because they felt the absence where in my case I've had to be away from five in AM to nine PM just to keep it afloat.
Como ustedes saben, algunos cerraron.
And like you guys know, some of them had to close.
Algunos no lo hicimos.
And some of us who didn't.
Tratamos de sobrevivir como en aquel tiempo.
We tried to survive and get by like those old times.
Coza que no debía haber pasado, pero pasó.
But it happened.
No fue mi culpa.
It wasn't my fault.
Fue de alguien más.
It was somebody else's.
Estoy pagando y voy a pagar las consecuencias de alguien más.
I'm paying for the consequences of somebody else's decision.
Quisiera que lo piensen.
I want you guys to think about this.
Y que hagan algo si está en sus posibilidades y si lo quieren hacer.
And do something if it's within your, um, discretion and if you want to.
Porque a veces las cosas pueden estar en mi mano, pero puedo querer no hacerlas.
Because sometimes things are, um, at my, in my hands to do something, but I just, but we don't.
También entiendo que ustedes tienen una responsabilidad y una cara que presentar.
I understand that you guys have responsibilities and a face to show.
Solo quiero que hagan la mejor decisión, porque esta decisión los va a llevar, la van a, la va a llevar, a llevar ustedes por siempre.
And they make the best decision because this choice you guys are gonna have to, it's gonna be with you guys forever.
Es todo lo que les quiero decir. Muchísimas gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for listening.
Y que Dios los bendiga para tomar la mejor decisión. Gracias.
Taking the best decision, thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Anyone else on this item that would like to speak tonight? Would you like an interpreter or, you're good, how are you?
Good evening, my name is Maria Rango, and I have two businesses in this area. Which one of them was excluded from the map, and we respect that. But the only business that we have in that area on the map, um, I don't think we're gonna qualify because we don't have all the requirements, uh, that are on the list. And I wanna, I wanna say that it's, it's tough. When we start this, uh, situation, eh, it feels like we were having a nightmare because of the two businesses, they went down. And, and it's hard to wake up every morning checking your bank account and being overdraft and being overdraft and just look at your building and see like if you still have power or water or just being aware that you don't get your bills cut up, cause it's hard to pay extra money that you're not making to be, you know, um, on your daily basics that you need. And thinking about this situation when we start coming and asking for help to the city, we got hope when we hear about, um, CBD, CBD G funds. And we got hope, but now it's kinda hard. I know, like you guys mentioned, that is not on you guys, but we're hoping now that you guys help us to see if there's any changes on the, uh, requirements, cause they're really hard. It seems like we're qualifying for a house, for a mortgage. And the income that they put on the application, I wanna say for a business, that's a lower income. And that business, I think a person with a regular job, working construction or somewhere else, they will make that money. So for a business, that income is too, uh, too low to ask for that. Um, that's, that's one of the things that is making it hard. And, um, so, um, I wanna say that, repeat that again, that we got the hope and everybody was uh, fighting for this help, cause we were asking the city to not let us go down and give us the support as our city Pasco members to get those incomes, so we can get on top of the, um, our needs. And, but the problem now again, not qualifying for this, is like, we feel like the first day when they closed the roads. So we, we went back again to the same problem. And it's a lot of us and a lot of the, um, business members, they're not in here today because they lost hope, hope, and they are sad, and they feel like we are in the same situation again, so hopefully, anything you guys can do for us, like, uh, like you mentioned, it's not on you guys, but is there any other way like to change requirements that'll, to make it easier for us, because those two months, the, we went and losing income, probably the rest of the year, we can be better, but we're not gonna recover that income anymore. We are behind on our bills or payments. And I say that because, um, personal, me, I have all my bills like yellow, red. Just waiting for the last day, just to have a little bit more income to pay the bill. So hopefully you guys can do something else for us, so, um, to make it work and to feel the support again, like qualifying for those incomes. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing the impact on your life and business, appreciate it. Anyone else that would like to speak? Welcome.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Sergio Ramirez, reño de Victory Cleaning Services, aquí en dos treinta West Lewis Street.
You're Sergio, the owner of Victory? Cleaning Services on Lewis Street.
Y yo vengo a hablar sobre mi negocio, ¿verdad? Este, nosotros, el, apenas tenemos dos años trabajando en eso.
And I'm here to speak about my business, right? We have, um, we have been working here for two years doing this now.
Y, eh, si tenemos un, se puede decir un impacto, ¿verdad? Tal vez no tan grande como los de mis compañeros que están ahí atrás.
And, um, it, it did impact us, maybe not as a biggest impact as, um, my, uh, the people that are here in the back.
Pues como mi, mi negocio es pequeño, pues no ganamos mucho todavía, ¿verdad? Entonces, pero el, el año pasado, aún así, en el primer cuarto ganamos, este, veintidós mil. Y este año apenas llegamos a los ocho mil dólares. y este año apenas llegamos a los ocho mil dólares.
Dieciocho mil.
Ocho mil.
So, um, the impact on my business, um, so last year, the quarter, the first quarter, we did twenty-two thousand and then this year so far, we have eight thousand.
Entonces me, yo tampoco no sé si voy a llegar a calificar, ¿verdad? Por todos los requisitos que tiene la aplicación, por eso no la he llenado, estoy colectando toda la información todavía.
And I don't know if I'm gonna be able to qualify either because of that, um, I'm still trying to collect all the, um, the necessary things that are on the list.
Y me gustaría también, como mencionaron mis compañeros, que si podían hacer algunos cambios a la aplicación para que ellos también, este, calificas.
And like, um, everyone said, I've, um, I hope that you guys can make some changes to the application, so they can also qualify.
Eso es todo y gracias por su tiempo.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming and speaking. Alright, anyone else? Come on up, welcome.
Hello, my name is Wendy, my business is Dark Angel Performance, we're located at one oh four South Tacoma Street. Um, so pretty much you guys have heard it all. At this point, um, uh, I heard some information that was given out tonight. Um, that you guys possibly had someone that was going out to the businesses and letting them know that there was going to be some sort of impact. First of all, that never happened. I was never informed. I only started coming to these meetings because my business started falling through the cracks. After I started coming to these meetings, the person that was there, that was giving me information was Valerie. Um, she's the one that kept every single one of us informed, which wasn't even her job. Somebody from the city should have been doing this. It shouldn't have fallen on her shoulders. Secondly, um, like a lot of these people were saying, um, in the meetings, they were given hope, we were given hope. And as soon as this application showed up, you guys are sitting here saying, "We only have three applications." Well, have you guys asked yourself why? Or do you guys just think that, "Oh, we just came to these meetings to just stay here and complain and, and tell you guys all of this and then get the application and say, 'Okay, whatever, we have it, we don't wanna fill it out.'" That's not the case. I would say, take a moment and actually take into consideration, why are these people not filling this application out? What is going on that we are not listening? You guys are the ones that were supposed to be out there letting these businesses know, "Hey, this is how you may be impacted and this is how we can help." And that never happened. And as of right now, every single one of us is still here trying to figure out a way to work with you guys. And it just feels like we're getting nowhere. It just feels like, "Oh, we're given something and as soon as we get it, it's not working for us." And we're letting you guys know, "Hey, it's not working. What's going to be the next step?" Or are you guys just going to decide, "Hey, you know, we're just gonna close this up and brush it off our shoulders?" Because it's not affecting you guys personally? As of right now, a lot of these businesses, um, Lewis Street is now officially opened. My business is on Tacoma Street, which means that that back end is closed. Um, I don't know how much longer it's going to be closed. My customers have trailers when they bring their vehicles in. I was told that a location behind the storage land was going to be open so that my customers could do U-turn to back their trailer up into my location. That has yet to happen. My customers are having to go into the railway location so that they can do those U-turns and go into my business to drop off their vehicles. That is risking my customers to get a ticket for being in an area that we're not supposed to be. So at this point, what is going to happen when that, when that eventually does happen? When my customer does say, "Hey, you know what, Wendy? I ended up getting a ticket because I had to do a U-turn there because there's a road closure sign." Is the city of Pasco going to be responsible for that? Because I've obviously been up here letting you guys know what the issue is, including with all of these other people. And we're not being heard. We feel like we're just talking and it's falling on deaf ears. So I would really appreciate it if you guys could actually take some time and really take into consideration everything that has been said. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing. Alright, anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Welcome.
Muy buenas noches a todos.
Good night, everyone.
Mi nombre es Francisco Álvarez.
Francisco Álvarez.
Trabajo en nutrición familiar.
I work in, uh, family nutrition?
En dos veinte seis West Lewis Street, Suite B.
Lewis Street, Suite B.
Hola, Lewis.
On Lewis Street.
Ahí en the neighborhood de Valeria.
I'm Valeria's neighbor.
Ah, y lo que queremos más que nada, un poco es consalzar por la aplicación. Ah, veo que nos pusieron muchos requisitos para todos. A lo que estoy viendo, muy pocos vamos a calificar.
So I wanted to talk about the other, um, requirements that are in the application. And from what I've been seeing, so few of us are gonna qualify.
Yo estoy luchando, buscando los requisitos, pero veo que son demasiados.
I've been trying to meet all the requirements, but there's too, too many.
Ah, tengo, mis padres enfermos en México ahorita.
My parents are, uh, ill in Mexico.
Y, y no he podido ayudarlos.
And I haven't been able to, uh, go to help them out.
Y, y quisiera que facilitaran las cosas para que se, nos ayudemos todos.
And I wish that you guys would make things easier, uh, and it would be a big help for all of us.
Yo tengo trece años, casi catorce, trabajo en nutrición familiar.
I, it, I've been working there for thirteen, almost fourteen years in family nutrition.
Si vieran cómo me ha costado a mí hacer negocio, demasiado, no estaba así bonito. Muchos de ustedes, eh, han ido allí a su casa también. Eh, me ha costado, la verdad, todo. Ustedes no se dan idea lo que me ha costado para construir ese lugar ahí, con tanto sacrificio, eh, llevando mi, mis hijos conmigo, trabajé en el campo cuatro años, cuatro años y haciendo un ahorro pequeño para buscar un lugar para hacer mi negocio.
Uh, so, um, so it's been really hard for me. I've been giving this business my all, um, all the sacrifices that I've given. For example, I've have been, I've had to take my kids with me. I've had to work in, um, the field work to make ends meet and just to save up some money.
Y pues todo ahí, todo iba bien. Fíjese me que me ha costado qué tiempo atrás cuando traaba a mis hijos y todo, con tanto sacrificio. Eh, había unas navidades que no iba ni con mi familia porque no, no me alcanzaba ni para la gasolina.
And it, um, and we were struggling and I had to give it all. Sometimes, um, I wouldn't go on Christmases to see, um, my family because I didn't have enough money for gas.
Ya solo nosotros sabemos lo que hemos pasado por situaciones difíciles y creo que muchos compañeros están igual que yo, que les ha costado muchísimo construir su negocio. Sacrificios, todos tengo bilis atrasados, eh, tuve que conseguir con la familia para cubrir la renta del negocio. Yo no tengo ninguna otra entrada de dinero.
And all of us, um, like, like me here, we are hurting. Um, for example, I've been having to ask family members, um, to pay my bills that I'm behind on.
Y también un poco desilusionado por los parqueaderos, yo me quedé sin ningún parqueadero. Y hoy mi vecina de enseguida, el Suite, Suite, ah, y Suite B, ¿qué soy yo? Ahí trabajo yo en nutrición familiar, nos quedamos sin ningún parqueadero. Cuando tiempo atrás dijeron que nos iban a poner parqueadero y yo les, les dije a la Siri cuando fueron ahí a la reunión un jueves, les dije, eh, creo que no, no me van a poner parqueadero.
And, um, me and my neighbor, uh, she's Suite A and I'm Suite B, we have no parking. On these meetings that we have been going on Thursday, they, um, they told us that we were gonna have parking, but I told them, uh, I doubt it.
Y, y ya luego ellos me dijeron, dijeron, "No te preocupes, espera al final, si va a haber parqueadero." Me mandaron un video como iba a quedar todo y ya me dio gusto en ese rato porque sí se ha mirado que sí me van a dejar parqueadero por toda la orilla y van a poner parqueaderos como estaba antes.
And they told me not to worry about it. They sent me a video where they showed what it was gonna look like and I was happy because I saw some, they were gonna give me some parking on the corner.
Y finalmente me voy dando cuenta cuando estaban poniendo las líneas y todo, que empezaron a sellar ahí, poniendo la piedra y todo, que no dejaron ningún solo, parqueadero, nada.
And just, I found out just recently when they were putting the stripes for the parking and the rocks, that didn't leave us any parking at all.
Cambiaron todo.
They changed everything.
Mhu, eso me desilusionó mucho porque no tengo el privilegio, ni siquiera cuando llevo carga, hielo o cosas ahí, no tengo el privilegio ni siquiera cómo descargar, eh, no hay donde.
And that left me pretty hopeless because if I have things to bring in, that I have to carry or ice, I can't even, um, park nearby to unload it.
Aparte me quiero parqueaderos, dijeron los parqueaderos a veces están llenos, no hay lugar.
And sometimes when I, when I wanna park in the, uh, new parking spots, uh, there's no parking spots left.
Y les dije saber a las, de la ciudad cuando fueron a una reunión hace quince días.
I told the people, uh, from the city when they went, when they had a meeting like two weeks ago.
Dijeron, "No te preocupes, vamos a poner en el lista este problema, a ver si podemos hacer algo de hacer parqueaderos en esta dirección de tu negocio hacia allá."
Not to worry about it, that they were gonna see what they could do about adding some more parking lot, parking space spots in my direction.
Ajá, y espero, ojalá, y que sí pudieran ayudarnos en eso, en poner unos parqueaderos, de verdad, personales para ahí, porque es bien difícil sin parqueaderos. Un negocio sin parqueaderos, la verdad, baja de valor y, la verdad, los clientes están quedando, apenas están empezando a regresar, un creo tu cliente y pues luego me está reclamando que los parqueaderos, ¿qué pasó?
And I really, um, hope that you guys can do something about it because it really impacts our business. The clients are starting to come back and they're asking, um, why there's no parking spot and they're, they're complaining.
Y sé que son la ciudad, ustedes tienen el poder de hacer ese trabajo que ustedes quieren, toma decisión entre todo el equipo. Sé que sí se puede, tomando el acuerdo, sí pueden hacernos unos parqueaderos si ustedes se ponen de acuerdo entre todos.
And I know that, um, that's, uh, your job and you guys all have to agree with it, but it can't be done if you guys all agree on it.
Y pues fíjese que nosotros hemos, hemos empezado la lucha y hasta la fecha estamos pacíficamente, hemos estado viniendo a todas las reuniones y pues allá también, siempre hemos estado al tanto de todo.
And we've been, um, involved, we've been coming to all the meetings and going to all the ones that they, um, that they hold for us.
Ah, hemos hecho muchísimos sacrificios, otra cosa también, eh, la parte de afuera del negocio, del nutrición familiar afuera ahí, nos pusieron pura piedra, cambiaron todo el sistema. Primero dijeron que nos iban a poner yarda, después cambiaron todo, pusieron pura piedra fea grande, eh, muy peligrosa. El día que la pusieron, ese día de la noche yo fue mandado al negocio. Estamos hablando entre ocho y media de la noche, mientras tuve en la computadora, oyó un ruido afuera y estaban jugando seis jóvenes afuera con las piedras. Son piedras grandes, peligrosas para la, para cualquier cosa.
We've been, um, all have, having to make some sacrifices. Um, but I also wanted to mention how they, uh, put rocks outside of my business. At first the plan was to, uh, have grass, but one of these nights, uh, around eight P.M., I walked outside and there's like a group of six guys playing with the rocks.
Y no sé, me gustaría que pudieran hacer un cambio ahí en esa parte, no sé si ustedes se ponen de acuerdo como dijimos en la otra parte también, pueden hacer ese arreglo, cambiar ese sistema, arreglar algo diferente para que no haya peligro de poner pasto con pasto, quedaría bonito.
And I, like I was saying, I hope that you guys, you guys can do this. If you guys all come to an agreement, if you guys can change it to grass, grass would be nice.
Mhu, y se vería más presentación al negocio, se vería más bonito, la verdad.
Would look nice.
Porque los, los, los clientes dicen que qué feo quedó, que por qué quedó así.
Clients are saying that, um, it's ugly now, why, why is it like that?
Mhu, aparte peligroso por las piedras.
It's dangerous because of the rocks.
Ajá, y me gustaría pues pusieran, facilitaron un poco más las cosas de, sobre el dinero también para que todos los que estamos impactados obtengamos esa ayuda, porque sí la necesitamos de verdad, todos, todos los que estamos impactados. De mi parte, muchísimas gracias a todos, gracias por escuchar, muy felices, ya todos.
And I, uh, do wanna say, uh, make it easier for everyone that's impacted to receive these funds because, um, they all are struggling. And that's everything on my behalf, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I'll make one last call for anyone that'd like to speak, uh, before we wrap up the public hearing. Is there anyone, anyone else? Make it quick, please, cause you've already spoken for a significant amount of time.
I just wanna, also, somebody just, uh, text me to let me, that I forgot to mention. The day that staff came out to hand out the applications to the group, they also said that the application has not been seen or approved by the city, by the city council. So we have an application that was given to these folks that the city of Pasco has not approved it. The other point is that we had the mayor, uh, Peter Serrano, voted against. He was the only one that voted against in favor of the three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So this brings a concern, uh, Mr. Cochran. A concern that if you had the mayor voting against giving these business owners any money, what's it gonna, how, how are they in position to think that he wouldn't try to convince the rest of the city council to not to approve that application? The application's null and void, it hasn't been even been seen or approved by the city council. And we wanna make sure that, uh, you understand that, that, uh, here these people are filling out an application and they're asking them to fill out an application that hasn't been approved by the city of Pasco. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I will clarify on that though. Um, I believe the application has to be derived from the community development block grant requirements and criteria. And I don't know that it's a requirement that the city council must approve it. So it's, for, for the record, um, let's be accurate about what's going on, so, is that accurate?
Uh, that is correct. And I would also like to add that while, one of, one of the factors for the application being out to the public uh, before the council has actually, and planning commission has recommended this reallocation and council will be making their decision for, um, actual allocation of these CDBG funds for this purpose, uh, was to make sure that we are being more expedient. Um, and hence, we are doing things a little bit out of order. Uh, but council has been, is aware of this application at this time. And we, we absolutely understand that, uh, federal grants are hard. We use federal grants for, um, infrastructure construction all the time. Uh, and even as a city with resources and, and knowledge of working with these grants, uh, we have to be very careful. So we recognize that and we definitely appreciate the comments today.
Thank you, City, Deputy City Manager Sigel. Uh, one of the things I think it's also important to understand is that, um, it's clear that there's a need, there's clear that there's been impact. I think you've shared that with us tonight and we believe that and we are tremendously empathetic and compassionate to the impact that's happened. Um, I think one of the, kind of the sources of tension is that there's a limit based on the criteria of these funds. In some ways, um, you could say that this was probably not the best way to solve this problem, but the city council looked for a way. But these community development block grants have strict federal criteria. So I think one of the things I would encourage you all to do tomorrow at the council meeting is encourage council to find other remedies and other solutions that are beyond simply relying on community development block grant. Cause that is not necessarily going to work for all things here. But, um, I think that's a, something that is important to understand is the criteria, the limitations, the application is really based on strong federal criteria that none of us here, the council, staff have any control over. And so what I would encourage you to do is encourage city council, we will encourage city council in our recommendation probably, to find additional remedies to solve this problem because it's clear, it's a challenge, it's clear that it's had impact to businesses and your families and we care, uh, but we have to live within the criteria of what this, uh, these funds can be used for. So that makes sense to everybody. With that, I will close the public hearing and I will open it up to staff for additional questions to, or sorry, staff for additional comments and then the commissioners for additional questions and comments to staff, if that makes sense. Anything else staff would like to add?
No comments on our end, thank you Chair.
Alright, commissioners, anything from your side? Any questions you'd like to ask staff or any feedback or comments?
Uh, yeah, just a comment, uh, Lewis Street, um, overpass, it's a great project, the city should be proud. Uh, it's gonna benefit all the citizens. Uh, unfortunately, it's come at the expense of the many business owners. citizens, uh, unfortunately, it's coming at the expense of the many business owners, um, it's very unfortunate. It's very clear to me that these businesses that were in duly impacted should be qualified just by the fact that they're in that area. Uh, I understand we got some challenges because these are federal grants that we have, meet certain criteria. But I think, uh, I think the city needs to do the right thing and take care of these folks, uh, totally in favor of that. So I would recommend that the, uh, that the planning commission propose that to the city council and I'll urge the, the citizens here to, um, again, to, um, uh, speak before the city council and, uh, uh, try to push in in that direction, to do a blanket qualification, any, any business that's within that area be automatically qualified for these funds. Thank you.
To piggyback on, um, what you just said, I was thinking about community buy-in. How, um, important it is to be able to, you know, have these opportunities to be able to hear our community members. Um, we're just a group of volunteers, we're not elected officials. We're here, uh, serving with our hearts and listening ears and, um, we, we feel you guys and, um, we're definitely listening. Um, as volunteers, we can be able to share out, um, some suggestions and, um, with the topic of community buy-in, maybe hopefully there's a future opportunity to be able to, and soon, to be able to take a look back at how it can be a more inclusive, um, grant opportunity for everyone that's in that footprint. Um, the thirty-nine businesses that's been identified, um, in collaboration with your guys' voices. So not a shortage of documentations and, um, uh, evidence of the need, but how to be able to, um, create the application that therefore serves the best end as well as serves the needs of, um, federal or state funding, whatever this grant may come from. Um, collaborating together I think would be the best direction forward, however that may look within the city resources and the city time, as well as your guys' time. You guys work really hard, we heard from nine A M, um, from five A M till nine P M at night and then some. And, um, I grew up on a family farm, I absolutely understand those hours and how hard it is and how all your dreams, all of your money gets dumped into your family business. Um, and so thank you for your guys' courage, your guys' bravery and your guys' resilience coming back again and again to be able to share in these chambers. For us, the first time for us because we are the planning commission, we are the volunteers. But you've came back again and again to the elected officials whose responsibility is to you. That's what I wanted to share out. Thank you city staff for the hard work you've done and be able to help communicate out to planning commission to be able to help us understand this kind of first time, um, process that any of us have ever seen and maybe the city has felt too, so thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Laramine, go ahead, Commissioner Campos.
I just wanna say to all the business owners that came tonight, just echo like my fellow commissioners, thank you so much for making time and coming in and just sharing us your story, uh, it's important for us to hear that. Um, I, I think I already know the answer to this question, but I just wanna make sure to ask it so that we have clarity. There is absolutely no way to change any of the criteria, uh, regard this application.
Um, Mr. Campos, so, uh, when this was actually brought to, uh, my attention after council, I decided to uh, reallocate these funds, uh, me and deputy city manager as well as our finance director met with our HUDRA and, uh, went through the guidelines and the restrictions of what it would take to do this kind of activity. Uh, because using C D B G funds, you have to meet a national objective as well as the activity has to follow within the guidelines of what HUD allows us to use the money for. So, uh, after we had talked, uh, a while, we decided that the micro enterprise was the only way that we could go, which actually with that they have to, uh, help retain or create a job, a full-time position. Um, and, you know, that's, that's kind of where we're at, I mean, uh, the requirements that are required on the application are HUD requirements.
Thank you, so I, I think we all knew that, I just wanna make sure that we asked that question. So that we dot our i's and cross our t's and make sure that, uh, we try the best at our possibility to do this. Uh, I echo with also, um, with fellow commissioners that, um, I think that, you know, this is much needed and we will approve this, but the hope is that we uh, would also challenge the staff and and, um, uh, city council to look at alternative methods to continue to help, um, all those that have been impacted by this, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions or comments from the commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Torres.
Uh, just a comment, I think, um, like all the commissioners that have spoken today have, um, thanked the community for coming, um, expressing your views and giving us your feedback. Um, I think there's no doubt that this is a great need that's, uh, needed for our community, for the businesses that support, um, the people in our community. I think that maybe one of the things that, um, we can include along with the recommendation to not only, um, allocate these funds for the help to the businesses that could possibly qualify, but also, um, you know, and looking at the application, if we can help people who are trying to get through the application, find a way to say like, how can we say yes versus like, we just need this information. I think we need to provide as much help as we can. Um, and then on top of that, look for other sources of funding that maybe are available from the city or, um, or from other sources that we can possibly tap into that doesn't have such, um, heavy requirements. Um, because I think as many of the people who have come up to speak have said that this is not something that, uh, that was, um, I guess maybe executed in the best way for our, for the people of our community and for the businesses that are in that area and even just even outside of that little square, um, you know, that whole area has been impacted. And so I think it's important for us to take, you know, their feedback, their, um, you know, their requests and their need, um, into account, into how we can best serve. You know, now that the, that the situation has happened, how can we best help, um, uh, our community recover from this? And so, um, if we could even use some of these community funds and from this block grant to like one of the, uh, gentlemen that spoke to maybe help, um, if it's not gonna go to a specific business to help the area, you know, um, look, you know, better. That if it's, you know, if we can use some of this funding instead of, you know, giving it to specific businesses to use it to, to beautify the area or um, help access or get this, um, done faster, whatever we can do. Um, if it's not gonna be able to, I don't wanna waste the, um, the opportunity for us to be able to allocate these funds and then have them just sit there because people can't, um, access them because of the requirements. So if we can also think about alternatives for using this, um, these funds, um, outside of just, um, providing grants, that would also, I think, be one of a good recommendation. Um, for us to go forward to the city council with. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Torres. Well, if no further comments or questions, um, we have two a- available motions to us and you could either, uh, the other thing is I might even encourage a, um, a tweak on one of the motions. If we are all in good consensus of approving, then you may also make additional recommendations, you can make a further motion of the, of the nature. We further move that city council and staff seek additional means to assist these business owners. That might be an additional recommendation that we add to our motion, but I am open and would entertain motions to whatever effect that the, the group would like to put forward.
Commissioner Carr, I wrote just kind of the same thing, so I agree with that.
So your motion, go ahead and read through the motion with yours.
I move the planning commission close the public hearing on the substantial amendments to the annual action plan for programs twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. I further move that the planning commission recommend approval of the relocations of the funds from the Louis Street second to fifth project to the twenty twenty-four small business relief program project. In addition, we recommend that city council find alternative funds to continue to support those that have been impacted.
Thank you for that mouthful. Do I have a second? Great, we have a second. Commissioner Campos has moved and seconded from Commissioner Mendez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed? Uh, the motion passed unanimously. All right, well, thank you. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate hearing your stories. We appreciate hearing the need. Uh, we appreciate, uh, that you're here and are active in your community. I encourage you again to come back tomorrow and talk with city council and express your same concerns. Um, and continue to work with staff on alternatives and ways to help. Thank you very much. Uh, with that, we will turn to other business. Um, I, there's nothing on the agenda, but I did wanna mention that, um, I will be out in June and I wanted to get back to you, Commissioner Laramine as the vice chair, to see if you're available to chair for the June meeting?
Yeah, I will go ahead and share with them, yes.
Awesome. We have a chair for the June meeting. With that, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I will move. All right.
Second.
All right. The meeting is adjourned at seven fifty P M. Thank you all for being here in a special meeting. Thank you, everybody.